September 2020 Board Meeting to Order and I'll turn the floor over to Dr. Guatney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd say good evening, Board, and good evening to everybody who's present with us here at the Performing Arts Center, as well as those folks who are watching us online on Rebel TV. Thank you for being here with us at the meeting this evening. Mr. Chair, our first item on the agenda after call to order is the invocation. And I would like to welcome retired Fannin County School System Administrator and Fannin County Post Two Commissioner, Mr. Glenn Patterson, to lead us in the invocation. Mr. Patterson, would you come forward, please?
Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Guatney. It's an honor and pleasure to be with y'all here tonight, especially back, I call this home. And I've already seen a lot of familiar faces and friends. It is an honor and privilege to be with y'all tonight. The term educator will always be very special to me in my heart. Been an educator for about over 30 years, about 20 of them been in Fannin County. And I can honestly say that Fannin County has got the most dedicated, high-character individuals that I've ever been around. And it has been an honor and pleasure to be with you. And it's just great to be affiliated with such an organization as Fannin County School System. Wanted to also just say a word, wanted to thank Dr. Guatney for inviting me. We're very fortunate to have his strong leadership. I've worked beside him for many years, and I can only just say that he's top-notch. And we are very, you know, very proud of him and for all his hard work. We want to thank him for that. Wanted to just real quickly give you two things to think about tonight. When I was looking at this, first word is a peacemaker. And we got Major Bozeman going to be doing the pledge after I get through here. But in the Bible, the peacemaker is one that not just keeps the peace, he resolves conflicts, he's a mediator. This may mean that you have to give extra effort for peace. Also, when to be a peacemaker, you've got to show mercy. And our Lord has shown us mercy, and we ought to remember to be merciful. And to do that, we've got to show forgiveness. So I want you to think about forgiveness, and I want you to think about being a peacemaker. I wanted to, I know we've got some Bible scholars here. I had a funny story of my wife, and yes, I haven't had her permission to tell you this real quick. But she was five years old, she said, the other day, not the other day, but one time long ago, not too long ago, though, I better watch that. And her mother was tucking her in bed when she was five, and she was telling her about forgiveness. And she said, I can remember, you know, sitting, laying in that bed after she got through, you know, getting ready to go to sleep. And who can tell me who knows how many, what does the Bible say? How many times are we supposed to forgive people?
Seventy times.
There you go, seventy times seven. Okay. And so Beverly was thinking about that, because that's what her mother told her. And Beverly said, you know, I prayed to the Lord, that, Lord, I just want to save them up, because I think I'm going to need them a little bit later on. And I laughed at that, and I says, well, you know, maybe that's what we do sometimes. And, you know, we don't forgive people enough. We live in rough times, you know, we have a lot of anger in the world today, a lot of people with social injustice issues. And it's an unprecedented time with the pandemic and so forth, just a lot of things. So I want you to think about showing forgiveness, and when you do that, being a peacemaker. Because we need that, we need that in the world today. All right, let's go to the Lord in prayer just for a moment, please. Lord, heavenly Father, thank you so much for your mercy and grace, that you don't give us what we deserve, but you give us that grace and that mercy that we, that we just, as individuals, need to have. Lord, we mess up, we make mistakes, but you take us back. Thank you so much. And this troubled world will help us to be a part of the answer and not just a part of the problem. Before we become peacemakers, help us to remember to be able to forgive as you have forgiven us. You are the God who makes and moves heaven and earth, and you want to work in us and through us. Help us to invite your presence right now and your power to live in us. Thank you for this school system, Lord, its teachers, its administration, every boy and girl, cafeteria work, custodian, everyone that has a part, Lord. Protect them and guide them, each one, and let this meeting be pleasing to you. Give wisdom with all the decisions. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Patterson. Ladies and gentlemen, tomorrow, September 11th, is Patriot Day. And Patriot Day is recognized by U.S. law as the official day of remembrance for the 2,977 killed in the September 11, 2001 terrorist attacks. Please join me at this time for a moment of silence to honor the memory of those who lost their lives in the attacks. At this time, United States Marine Corps Veteran and Fannin County Sheriff's Office Chief Deputy Major Keith Bozen will lead us in the pledge to the flag. Major Bozen, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Guatney. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Major Bozen. Mr. Chair, Agenda Item Number Four is to approve the Consent Agenda, and this consists of two parts. A is to approve the agenda itself for tonight, and B is to approve minutes that are posted. Mr. Insley, if I could get you to begin opening those minutes, and please scroll through. Thank you, Mr. Insley. Mr. Chair, I recommend passage of both items on the consent agenda as presented.
Can the Chair get that motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. The next item is to approve clarification of previous minutes, and we'll ask Ms. Sisson to come to the front, please, and Mr. Insley, go ahead and open up the memo. We have two items that we want to, basically just clerical error in the minutes themselves, and we want to clarify these publicly and address them in the minutes. Good evening, Ms. Sisson.
Good evening. Thank you for considering these clarifications. On the June 11, 2020 Board Minutes, for Agenda Item Number 16, the minutes reflect that the Board approved the updated policy JCDA Code of Conduct. The policy JCDA was not updated or changed in any way. Instead, the Board approved the school's Code of Conduct, which is required by the policy JCDA. And the second item was from the July 9, 2020 Board Meeting, and the minutes for item number 13 reflect that a motion and a second were made to approve the purchase of a serving line for West Fannin Elementary School. The minutes regarding Agenda Item Number 13 should have included the results of the vote. All Board members voted yes, and also indicate that the motion carried.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sisson. Mr. Chair, I recommend approving the clarification as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sisson. Number six is to approve a revised MOU, and this revised MOU would replace an MOU that was previously presented by University of Georgia Cooperative Extension. So, Ms. Insley, you want to speak to that?
Yes, sir. We have Ashley Hopper here tonight, and she's going to share the three things that were, needs to be revised. And she also has brought with her the AmeriCorps worker that is new to us.
Okay, great.
We'll introduce her as well.
We'll welcome you both up to the podium. Good evening. And like that mask, go dogs.
Thank you. Greetings, Board. Thank you for giving me a, I'm much taller, sorry. Okay. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to discuss the discrepancy. I do apologize. The updated MOU was given to the county offices by our district staff during the height of the pandemic, and unfortunately, a draft of the new MOU was given to us instead of the completed version. So I appreciate the grace there while I go over the discrepancies. There's only three. So on the page three of the MOU that was given to the Board, it states, under Section A Cooperative Direct Pay, the final line, it says, UGA Extension has set forth an Addendum A and Exhibit A thereto, as well as under Section B Cooperative Contract Pay, it also has in there, and Exhibit A thereto. So those words were removed from the final version, because Exhibit A is actually a county salary spreadsheet, and not every county has to turn one of those in. So it was confusing, and it was thought, let's just remove that verbiage. So those are the two changes. And then the third and final change was actually on page four, under item number five, which discusses the discrimination policy. And essentially, what happened was, is our EEO office decided that it wasn't descriptive enough, and they wanted to be more inclusive, so they added in some additional language referencing including sexual harassment, pregnancy, sexual orientation, and gender identity. So they just expanded that policy to include more people to be covered, and those are the changes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Insley, you concur.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I recommend approving the revised MOU as presented.
Can the Chair have that motion?
Motion to approve the revised MOU with UGA Extension.
I'll make a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you. And do you want to introduce somebody?
I do. I would, it is my absolute pleasure to introduce our new 4-H AmeriCorps Service member, Rachel Wasserman. And I think she would like to just say a few words about herself.
Sure. Welcome, Rachel.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here with you guys. I'm starting in this position very soon. I grew up in Lumpkin County as an avid Lumpkin County 4-Her. I went through K through 12 with Lumpkin County, and I served as a 4-H Camp Counselor at Rocky Eagle 4-H Center down in Eatonton. So I'm excited to start in this position and really be working with the youth in your school systems, and to be in the elementary schools, and of course, working with students in the middle and high school as well. Looking forward to working with you guys.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you and your program. Mr. Chair, next, item number seven is Special Recognitions. And for the first of those, I will bring Assistant Superintendent Sarah Rigdon to the front. Good evening, Ms. Rigdon.
Hello. Good evening, Board. I am excited tonight to present the certificates for accreditation from the Georgia Accrediting Commission to each of the five principals in Fannin County Schools. As you're aware, our school system does hold multiple accreditations, one from Advanced Ed, or now known as Cognia, and the other through GAC, Georgia Accrediting Commission. So if I could have the five principals start making their way down.
We'll put them up here on the stage.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, so literally, no, this is a lot of basic modules. From East Fannin Elementary School, Mr. American Drive. From West Fannin Elementary School, Mrs. Allison Barron. From Fannin County School, Mrs. Thursday Russell. And from, Mrs. Ellen Phillips, Mrs. Hannah.
Okay, our next recognition, I'd like to welcome to the podium Fannin County High School Interim Principal Debbie DeCabelis. Let's welcome Debbie to Fannin County. I should say Fannin County High School. She comes to Fannin County High School from West Fannin.
Yes. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
It's an honor to be here, and it's a privilege to be serving at Fannin County High School as the interim principal. I have to tell you, the students, the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the custodians, the nutrition staff, the bus drivers, and the administrators at the high school are nothing short of amazing. The students are respectful, responsible, and dedicated to doing what is right. I must say that I am truly blessed and thankful to have this opportunity. Fannin County High School is truly an awesome school, and one you should be proud of. So I'm very thankful, and I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Welcome. Ms. DeCabelis, you have some students that you wish to recognize?
I do. I would like to recognize, I know that at your last meeting, you did recognize our students from Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. So I would like to ask that the students come forward, and they can go ahead and start coming forward, and I will call their names. Would you like them to come on stage?
Yeah, let's put them on stage.
All right. We have Ms. Sydney Tarpley, Ms. Sierra Reynolds, Ms. Isabella Tashi, Alexis Hill, Anna Rhodes, and Gracie Stewart.
And these students competed in the summer and were quite successful.
They did an amazing job. And I have to tell you, they are truly leaders at our school. So I'm very proud that they are here tonight.
That's awesome. And we have their sponsor here, too.
We do. And if she'd like to come forward, that would be great.
Yeah, come on up.
And she is due any minute.
Yeah. We'll be quick about this. Ms. DeCabelis, would you like to join your students on stage?
Absolutely.
We really appreciate them being here this evening. And our fourth recognition is a very special group of folks that, we're actually going to recognize them as a part of Ms. Candy Sisson's Central Office Update, her presentation. So we'll go to the next Agenda Item, which is Agenda Item Number Eight. And we'd like to welcome you to the floor, or welcome you to the podium again, Ms. Sisson.
All right. Good evening again. My name is Candy Sisson. For those of you that don't know me, I'm the Director of the School Nutrition Program, so welcome all of you tonight. Today, I'm here to tell you about our school nutrition staff in the schools and their achievements in school year 2019-20. And I didn't get the clicker. One of our, our school nutrition managers, assistant managers, food service assistants, and cashiers are helping students build their bodies and minds so they can be ready to learn. We operate the largest restaurants in Fannin County. We have over 2,800 students in pre-K through 12. Our average daily meal service is over 1,300 breakfasts and over 13, over 1,600 lunches each day. And our elementary school students last year had after-school snack programs, and they usually served an average of 30 snacks a day. And what I really like to brag about the most is all of our health scores are 100. And schools have to be inspected twice each year, where restaurants in your community only have to be inspected once each year. And we consistently have perfect scores, and we're really proud about that. And it's not an accident that we get perfect scores. Next, I want to show you and introduce you, to you, some of our staff members. Our nutrition team at Blue Ridge Elementary School this year is Mindy Palet. She is new to us this year. Carrie Couch. Dana Hawkins is not new to Blue Ridge, to Fannin County, but she's new to Blue Ridge Elementary this year as a manager. Connie Knight is new to us this year as our cashier at Blue Ridge Elementary School. Somewhere, I skipped East Fannin. There we go. It's very sensitive. At East Fannin, we have Ann Ingram, Kristy Sparks, Heather Cobb is our manager at East Fannin, and Melissa Anis is our assistant manager. West Fannin's team includes Lisa Payne, Wanda Davenport, Julie Caudell, Amy Hawkins is our manager there, and Doris Tao. Our team Middle School includes Donna Ray, Jennifer Jones, Teresa Ray is our manager, Cindy Crowder, and Regina Wright. Our high school team is made up of Erica Ballantyne, Brittany Johnson, Janice Davenport, manager Rhonda Anderson, Kyra White, Kim Payne, and Gigi Thomas. One of the great accomplishments that this team, these teams did last spring is they came together and turned on a dime and offered seamless summer meals to our students in March, April, and May. And during that time, they served 68,584 meals, and that includes breakfast and lunch. And they worked with our Transportation Department to deliver meals into the community, and they worked at the schools with a lot of our paraprofessionals and administrators to deliver, or to have pickup, curbside pickup of meals. So they did a phenomenal job. It was a lot of stress, a lot of hard work, but they made that happen. Tonight, I'm here to recognize them for an award they received. And in school year 2016-17, the Georgia Department of Education School Nutrition Division developed something called Shake It Up. This is an initiative to improve the culture and perception of school nutrition programs throughout the state. The focus of Shake It Up is tasty meals, friendly cafeterias, and happy schools. The State School Superintendent and State Board of Education partnered with the school nutrition program to implement this. And our school nutrition managers, assistant managers, food service assistants, and cashiers are helping students build their bodies and minds so they can be ready to learn. They have received Gold Level status for the fourth year in a row to recognize their leadership in serving students tasty meals and friendly cafeterias in order to promote happy schools. And at this time, I would like to welcome them to the stage and ask Dr. Guatney to present their certificates. First of all, we have Rhonda Anderson from Fannin County High School. Followed by Teresa Ray from Fannin County Middle School. And Amy Hawkins from West Fannin Elementary School. Last year, Ms. Heather Cobb was the manager at East Fannin Elementary School and Blue Ridge Elementary School. So we are going to give her the East Fannin certificate, and we are going to let Ms. Dana Hawkins, who's the current manager at Blue Ridge, take the certificate back to Blue Ridge Elementary School to be displayed at that school. We do. We have one more certificate. The district also received Gold Level status.
Ms. Sisson, you can continue. You got some more information for us?
I do have some more information for you, and it's, it's pretty exciting. We have free meals, breakfast and lunch, for all children of Fannin County ages 18 and under through December 31, 2020. USDA has approved this as long as funding remains available. And it is our hope that this will relieve some of the financial hardships being felt by many in our community. And we are really excited about this. We started, we can backdate to September 1. We're working on adjusting account balances so that the funds paid will be reflected on the students' accounts. And we've already seen an increase in our student lunch and breakfast participation since Tuesday of this week.
That's great news.
That is great news.
Okay, Board, are there any questions about the nutrition? Part of Ms. Sisson's presentation? I think you have one. Ms. Sisson's list of duties extends beyond nutrition. And so there's one more area that, well, lots of areas that you're responsible for, but one more that she's going to share some information with you tonight.
One more area to chat about tonight is our Teacher of the Year program. Normally, this time of year, we are getting ready for a big fancy Teacher of the Year banquet and recognizing our nominees from each of the schools. But to adopt to the realities of COVID-19, the 2021 Georgia Teacher of the Year program was suspended. The 2021 Teacher of the Year cohort that we recognized a year ago in September will become the 2022 cohort. No state finalists were named last spring. So these carry over to the current year. They basically get to serve a two-year term, which is kind of fun. And our current Teacher of the Year for Georgia, Tracy Pendley, has agreed to extend her term through the 2021 school year. So our current nominees, from our last year's nominees, get to continue to be our current nominees. And a reminder, that is, Blue Ridge Elementary School, Ashley Coffinger, East Fannin Elementary School, Dana Harper, West Fannin Elementary School was Kimberly Brandon. The Middle School had David Queen, and our district Teacher of the Year and representative from Fannin County High School is Ms. Jill Dyer.
Thank you so much for that update, Ms. Sisson.
You're welcome.
Any questions for her, Board? Thank you, ma'am.
I'd like to make a suggestion.
Yes, sir.
We may not have the same procedures we have in the past, but we could have it on the agenda, on a meeting agenda, and give us an opportunity to congratulate those that are special.
Okay.
Teachers of the Year, if everyone agrees with that.
I think that's certainly possible.
All right. That's a great suggestion. Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lewis. Anybody else? All right. Thank you, Ms. Sisson. Okay, our next item on the Agenda Number Nine is School Governance Team Update, and we'll welcome Ms. Rigdon back to the podium.
Good evening again. So this is just a very quick update about a school governance team. We do have some professional learning that's coming up for school governance teams that's not this week, but the week after. Dr. Lynn Plunkett with the Georgia Department of Education Charter Division will be providing about 90 minutes of training to all of our about 90 minutes of training to all of our SGT members on the roles and responsibilities of the SGT. We're extremely excited about that. We do now have a full SGT at the high school with our new parent that has joined that team, Mrs. Ashley Sparks. And of course, it is now led by Principal Chair, Ms. Debbie Decubellis. In other exciting school governance team news recently, as you may recall from the summer, there was a discussion about whether or not we should discontinue an attendance incentive toward exams. And so the middle school, school governance team, and the middle school leadership team, and improvement teams all worked together to update their exemption policy. Parents did receive this memo back from, from Mr. Knuckles back in late August to let them know that the exemption policy has been updated and that beginning this year, an 85 class semester average will earn the student exemption from midterm and final exams, and that attendance will no longer be a factor in exam exemptions. Finally, just for your reference, here is the recent activity of the school governance teams. This includes all of their facility use requests, which of course, we're not really having at this point, field trips, which have all been suspended, a few fundraiser items that have been approved. Of course, all of them seem to be of a virtual type. And then other information about what was discussed at those meetings. So that is on the page for your reference. That is it.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Rigdon. Are there any questions for Ms. Rigdon on the SGT update? Okay. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is COVID-19 response update. And I'd like to welcome Mr. Roof.
Good evening.
Go ahead, sir.
All right. So we have a few things in terms of the, the COVID-19 update. First thing to point out is upon further review of Governor Kemp's latest executive order, all of our employees in the Fannin County school system have now been deemed essential. So what that means for us when it comes to COVID-19 moving forward, on a case-by-case basis, if we have an employee who has been exposed to a confirmed case of COVID-19 and remains asymptomatic, then that employee has two options. At that point, the employee can go home on a 14-day quarantine from the date of exposure, like we have been doing up to this point with teachers. Option two, they can stay at work while following strict CDC and Department of Health guidelines, which include wearing a mask the entire time they're at work, aside from, of course, eating lunch, but, but they would need to eat alone. Maintain further than six feet from all under, all other individuals, and have a daily symptom check provided by the school admin or a school admin designee each day upon arrival. And then, of course, if symptoms were to develop in, in that person, they would need to go home immediately. So that, that's what that essential status means for us right now in our school system. The, the next thing, you know, we're going to look at has to do with the, the case-by-case, the, the reporting that we put out every Friday. Well, let me back up. Before we look, before we look at that, I do need to point out too, that when, when it comes to the employees and those options that we just talked about, whether they choose to, to, to go out on a 14-day quarantine after exposure, or if they choose to stay at, at work and follow those strict CDC and DPH guidelines, we will support each employee's decision on a case-by-case basis, no matter, no matter what they decide, no matter what he or she decides. We, we will support their decision. Because each, as y'all know, each person's case with, with, with all this is, is different. And we'll support either decision there. And it's worth pointing out too, that, that there are certain pockets of our school system that have already been functioning like this. School nutrition, maintenance, SROs, those types of employees are, have already been functioning, just like we just talked about, you know, with, with being essential and, and having those options. And we've had no issues to this point with, with, with those employees. This, this essential worker status, like I said, it's now extended to, to all of our employees in the school system. So the next thing, looking at Mr. Ensley, there was, there was another link there. There we go. So go there and go to case information. Perfect. All right. So this is the thing that we put out every Friday. And if you notice, it is a little bit different than it was the last time we had a board meeting. And what's different about it is that we have, for further transparency, and because this is how we, we report it to, to the state once per week, we have divided the quarantines into two categories. Quarantines due to school exposure and quarantines due to non-school exposure. That again allows us to, for more transparency, and it's the way that we have to report it to the state anyway. So we went ahead and did that on our, on our weekly update that, that we put out for our, for our school system. This report, of course, is as of last Friday. This, this is going to look a little bit different tomorrow morning. We, due to the fact that we have had more students go out on quarantine due to positive cases. But this is very fluid. You know, this is something where, you know, this, this changes on a dime when it comes to, to the, to the number of people we have, you know, with positive cases and out on quarantine. But I can tell you, I mean, I feel like I can stand here and tell you that our teachers, our administrators, all of our staff members are doing everything they can to keep kids safe and healthy. We are, we're doing everything we can to, to keep that first place, keeping kids safe and healthy. Also, just for the purpose of clarity, you know, I, I know that last Friday, we had, you know, different people asking questions about what some of this stuff means. So we did put out an email to, to all the school system. And then we, we updated the website also to include just some definitions and some, some working information here to, to help people understand how to read that, the, the quarantines and the positive cases. We, we, we make sure that we put this out there every Friday. This is current data, okay? So it's a snapshot of current data. It's not cumulative. It, it doesn't, you know, it's not like if a, a person was positive three weeks ago, they're going to show up on this week's report. So it, it is, it's current data. Mr. Ensley, go back to the, the other one there, the, perfect. And then also a quarantine, just the definition of a quarantine. It only refers to an individual who is not at work due to being a close contact exposure to COVID-19. So for instance, this does not include people who are out of work awaiting COVID-19 test results that have no, no known exposure. It is strictly the people that have a known close contact to a confirmed case of COVID-19. So an individual who has tested positive does not count as a number in the quarantine cell. That person's going to go in the cell for a positive case. And that's because a person who has tested positive goes out on what's called isolation, not quarantine. So they just go in that positive case cell. And again, like we said, the numbers are current, they're not cumulative. We felt, we, we felt like that would give a more accurate description of what's happening now in our school system. And also, just some more, just working things to understand, is it an individual's 14-day quarantine due to exposure begins the day that he or she was considered a close contact exposure? So there's sometimes, you know, we may not find out about a positive case for a few days, and it's going to go back in time to that date of exposure for, for when that quarantine starts. So that's something to know too, because there are some people that are confused about that, because they're, they're like, well, you know, because people talk and they're wondering, why, why does this person, why are they going out on, for, for 13 days and, and, you know, this person's going out for five? And it's because it all goes back to that, to that date of, of exposure. Another thing to point out is an individual who tests positive begins his or her 10-day isolation period on the day that he or she first exhibited the classic symptoms, or the day of the positive test if, if the person is asymptomatic. So, you know, again, it's just, that, that's one of those things, again, to just know that, because that might get confusing if, you know, and again, we're not out there talking about people's stuff, but people do talk, so, with each other, I mean. So it's good to, good to have that out there so that people understand what, what we're looking at there and, and, and the guidelines from the Department of Health that we're required to follow. Another thing to point out here when it comes to COVID-19, this is, and this is some good news, you know, up to this point. Our student attendance, when, when we look across the county right now, for the week of August 31st, our, our student attendance percentage for that week, last week, was 93.26%. So obviously, that's not as high as normal, but for the day and time that we're living in and what we're experiencing right now, that is a very respectable attendance percentage. I mean, that, that, that's something to, to be proud of right now. And, you know, that, that kind of brings me to, to some other points here when it comes to extracurricular activities. And then talking about our school nurses real quick and our admin and everybody. When it comes to extracurricular activities, you know, during these times, you know, we're, we're holding off on clubs that don't compete. So, you know, some of the, some of the clubs you might see at elementary schools, middle school, even high school that don't compete, we're, we're holding off on those. However, we are continuing to offer and fully support extracurricular activities that do compete. Athletics, or CTSOs, or career technical student organizations, like the FCC LA girls that you, that you saw come up here earlier that got recognized. Those, those types of clubs that compete, we, we are offering those. And, and that's, that, that mirrors what you're seeing across our Pioneer RISA and across our area also. And, and I just want to let y'all know that we're, we're monitoring symptoms and overall health of our competitors. We're encouraging everything that we can, hand washing, social distancing, and, and encouraging competitors to be honest about their symptoms. And, and I just can't, with all that, I just say all that to say, I just can't tell you what a great job our, our people are doing to try to keep our kids safe and healthy. I mean, we're there, working nonstop to do that. And so just a little summary about the extracurricular stuff also. We have had to postpone and cancel events due to COVID-19. This again is, is, is something that, that it's just the, the, the world we're living in right now with, with the Department of Health guidance. We have purchased an extra activity bus. We've had more and more coaches get their commercial driver's license. Our athletic director, David Henson, drove the middle school, he, he drove the, the team to their game in Pickens. And, and we're, we're also performing temperature checks. That's one other thing to point out at all of our athletic events. And again, I say all that to say that, that we're doing everything we can to keep our student athletes and our other competitors as healthy as we can and trying to do everything as safely as we can. And so that, you know, again, bringing me to my last point here, I, I honestly feel like we would not be where we're at in terms of keeping our schools open and being able to serve our kids face-to-face with, with what we're dealing with right now, just across the country and the world, if it weren't for our school nurses, our school administrators, and our school faculty and staff members. I mean, they, they have seriously done an outstanding job doing everything that they can to, to, to minimize the number of, of people that are coming to the buildings that are sick and just doing an outstanding job every single day. It's like a whole other, another added layer of these people's jobs that just makes their jobs that much more challenging. And they've just responded. I couldn't, I could not ask for, for, for a better team of people to respond to this. I could stand here with, with bold conviction and say that, that we, again, I, we wouldn't be where we're at without the hard work of the school nurses and the school admin teams. They need to be commended. They're, they're just doing a great job.
Put you on that list too, Mr. Roof.
Doing, doing the best we can.
You're managing a lot of information and you're, you're working hard to be transparent with it. And very much appreciate your work to lead the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Any?
Is there a number, a percentage of non-COVID attendance? What normally would we be running? Because I know it's not 100%, but...
We would normally be, we're usually at this time of year somewhere average probably, you know, 96, 97.
Mid, mid to high 90s.
Yeah. Yeah, something like that.
So not off by much.
We're doing good. If you, if you look at other schools, you know, most of us can get on and look, like Stevens County, I, I actually have, they had 115 students quarantined last week. So we're, we're doing exceptionally well in all the temperature checks, all this stuff. So, thanks.
Well, we're doing everything we can. And again, you know, all it takes is one positive case to make those numbers fluctuate.
Absolutely.
But I, I can tell you, I can stand here without a shadow of a doubt and tell you, our school nurses, our school admin, they're, they're, they're doing a fantastic job.
And this update goes on the website. You'll update it, you'll actually update it tomorrow.
Absolutely.
On the website. And you'll include this clarification information to help address, address some commonly asked questions.
Yes, sir.
That are out there. And all this will be available on the website.
Yes, sir. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Roof. Mr. Chair, next item on the agenda, number 11, is school happenings. And for that presentation, I'd like to welcome Fannin County Middle School Principal, Mr. Keith Knuckles. Hello, Mr. Knuckles. Good evening, sir.
How are you doing?
Doing well, thank you. Good to see you here.
Good to be here. Good to be seen here. God bless y'all. It's good to be here. You're going to be working this. Board leadership, it's good to be here. And, and this year is my 38th year starting in education. Since I was 21 years old, I've been involved in education some way or another. And this was the most unique year to get started. So I want to take you back to what it was like to be a student, a parent, a board member, a school leader, a principal on the night of August 6th. Do you remember the night of August 6th? We were nervous. School starts back. All right, the energy's there. We're getting to see our kids again for the first time since March 13th. Now, we've, different school leaders, principals have, have gotten together, they've decided to do something, because parents and children need to see their schools. So all of the energy that was in our school from August 3rd, when we started on our workdays, building up to that time here at FCMS on August 6th, was, was channeled together. We had new employees that were scared to death, but we also had not just our four, but we had 61 other teachers that were scared to death. The COVID is always there. Kids are coming back, what will parents want? What about this online learning thing? How are we going to catch up and, and get our kids caught up from what they missed out in the springtime? So there was great tension and stress, but I was so proud of my employees when they showed up. And then when I show you this picture, you see all these smiling employees. I understand on August 6th, they didn't have a clue what they were about to step into, but it was great. And they have done a wonderful job since then. I'd like to introduce some of our new employees. Seth Davis is our ag teacher. He is a former graduate and he is perfect for the role. I'm very pleased that Seth is with us. We've got him young. He's, he's starting out and we're trying to make sure he has all the best habits. He has tremendous potential for our ag program, our ag mission, everything that you have built over the last several years in this ag facility. He is dynamic. I'm exceptionally pleased to have him. Next, Mr. Chris Farr, lives in Gilmer County, but he, he is from Henry County originally, a UGA grad. And he's full of energy. See the smile? He's, he's, that's not fake. He's dynamic with the students. The kids already have made a great relationship with him. He, he's done a good job. Ms. Morgan Helton comes to us from Cherokee County, North Carolina. I had the privilege of watching her grow up. When I found out she was an educator and a PE teacher, I kind of sat back on my haunches and waited till I got the chance to hire her. And it worked out great for Fannin County Middle School, and it's going to work out for Fannin County students and athletics. Mr. Wesley Simonton came to us highly recommended, and since he stepped onto the campus, he's been nothing short of spectacular. He is also a PE teacher, a coach. And again, to walk into the gym, you see the kids excited about having the discipline and the strength and the courage. So we've got some good, young, dynamic people. Remember that night, August 6th, I told you about? I asked my sixth grade team, just like each of these principals had planned to do some kind of open house. Elementary schools did it for K3. We've chosen... We've chosen sixth grade. High school chose ninth grade, and so we had an open house. I'm going to show you what my sixth grade team has done here in putting together a welcome for the parents.
Hey, guys. Welcome to Middle School, sixth graders. We are so excited to have you all with us. My name is Ms. Dotson, and I am the ELA teacher for Team A. I want to take you on a tour of the school and introduce you to some of your brand-new teachers. So come on, let's go.
Hi, I'm Ms. Grabowski, and I teach science and social studies with Team A, and I am in classroom 401. I'm really excited to have you here, and I'm looking forward to a great year.
Hey, guys. My name is Ms. Jody Morgan, and I teach mathematics for Team 6A. You can find me in room 407. I sure look forward to this 2021 school year.
Hello, everybody. I'm Coach Ayers. I'm in sixth grade, Team A. Welcome to the 2020 school year, looking forward to a great year.
Hi, I'm Kelly Holsey, and I teach sixth grade language arts on Team B, and I'm in room 410. I'm looking very forward to meeting you this year and working with you, and I think we're going to have a great school year.
Hello, I'm Blake Pass. I teach sixth grade, science and social studies for Team B, sixth grade hall.
Hey, I'm Coach Godfrey. I'll be your math teacher for 6B this year, and hope to have a great year.
Hello, my name is David Fournay, and I'm a Team B co-teacher in all subjects, and I'm looking forward for an exciting year. Hope you're excited to be back at school.
Hi, I'm Ms. Stover, and I teach language arts on Team 6C.
Hey, my name's Mr. Farr, and I'm with 6C, and I'm teaching science and social studies this year. Looking forward to a great year. Keep working hard, and let's get started.
Hi, I am Ms. Richardson. I teach sixth grade math at Fannin County Middle School on Team C.
Hi, I'm Ms. Dill, and I am the co-teacher for Team 6C.
Welcome to the sixth grade hall!
Our intention for that video was to bring to an ease and a calm the parents and the students. And my sixth grade team is technologically dynamic. They're pretty good. Sometimes I have to pull the reins back on them, but they're very good, and they're wonderful at what they do. So, the first day of school, the next morning, trust me, the students were no more nervous than the rest of us because it was brand-new. And so the students entered, and we had a wonderful plan for transportation, how are we going to attack COVID, get the kids in, move them here and about. These are morning pictures of what we did with students as they came in. We placed them separately. We made sure they maintained distance. Many of the students still didn't have their mask because it was still brand-new. From that day to today, many more students are wearing their masks, but on those days, we didn't see a lot of masks. In the cafeteria, we did as best as we could to keep kids separated and within that six-feet separation. It's a tight fit, but we managed to do it. And on average, with each of our nine teams in each grade level, or actually the nine classes in each grade level, we have four, five, or six eating in the cafeteria, and the others are eating in the classroom. So we're splitting that up, so we're maintaining good sanitation, good health, and social distancing. First day got started good, everything was wonderful. We noticed a problem immediately, and it was on traffic. I bet many of you gentlemen on the stage got a phone call about that. One of the problems was there were so many more students being dropped off by parents instead of riding the bus. So we had the same number of buses, but many, many, many more parents bringing students. Dropping the student off wasn't so much a safety issue. As a matter of fact, it wasn't a safety issue at all where we were at the school, but it was a tremendous issue and a problem back on the highway where the parents were backed up, the traffic was backed up, and I got worried, we're even affecting high school traffic. And so that was disturbing. Wise men, Darren Daner, Denver Foster, the Sheriff's Department, Anthony Walden, leadership from the district, got together and created a scheme that we thought that could end the traffic flow. It caused change, which any time you bring about change, people are going to get nervous about it, sometimes be loud about it, and that's where I bet you heard about these things. On the fourth day, that change that was instituted, directed, guided, created by the leadership, and it was not the middle school leadership, it was great leadership above us, it worked out to be perfect. Today, the traffic flow with more parents dropping off, the same number of buses, is smoother than ever. We're not seeing traffic problems back into the highway. There is a safety pattern that we've gotten used to at the middle school. So one big obstacle that we hadn't prepared for is being handled real wisely. We had a good plan, and the plan secured itself. And before I get into athletics, I want to share this with you too. We have really, really worked hard to try to educate, try to make sure all things are there, but with the two new problems outside of our transportation, with online learning and COVID, we believe we're doing some pretty good stuff at the middle school. You heard Mr. Roof's presentation, we're seeing some good things. You can be proud of that. There have been plans made and carried out. With online learning, it's been a tremendous headache for Ms. Sarah Welch, Ms. Sarah Rigdon, but we're serving every student. Many students, over 550, are showing up face-to-face. We still have a lot of online learning students. Some of our students chose homeschool. Many of our students have been homebound or chose homebound for one reason or the other of our 700, but we're serving every student. Be proud of that. The plans that have been laid and carried out are wonderful. Our athletic program is off and running well. I want to share with you some things that we're doing. These are current pictures of football team who, even tonight, we won one game. We beat Pickens County in the eighth grade already. We're playing Clear Creek tonight, and I'm hoping to hear pretty soon about another victory. Our cheerleaders are working hard. The staff is smaller because the tryouts, middle school tryouts, were difficult to attend. Usually, we have 16 cheerleaders. This year, we have six. That was a negative impact. We hope that changes. Our volleyball teams are first place, undefeated. The girls are brimming, they're doing great. I wish you could see them. They only have two more regular season games left. The tournament's next Saturday. We're very proud of them. Our cross-country team is as normal under the leadership of Coach Davis, dynamic. We've had two events, two meets, and today was the third one. It was a home meet. I haven't heard results of that one yet, and we finished in the top two each of the first two times, and today's not going to be any different. Softball, we've got a real fireball leading the girls, and we've won three big games. We're excessively proud of beating those teams that we've beaten. We lost to Heartbreaker night before last to Union County, five to four, but they're competitive, they're getting the job done, and they're playing as a team with fire. So I'm excessively pleased with the way our females and our males are performing off, or actually, out of school, but they're doing the same thing in school. One of the things we have put into our goals, strategic goals this year, is to try to collaborate and bring STEM learning and STEM teaching into every team. We are meeting, the lady on the ride closest to you is Ms. Ashley Jacobson. She's our STEM teacher and STEM leader. We are meeting, she and I are meeting with every teacher every other week in the school to ensure that we are promoting, doing things together. The STEM teacher asks these team leaders, what are you folks doing, and how can we help you? And then we reciprocate that. This is what we can do. Will you help us? And we're starting to see things move in the direction that we want to, to get STEM certification coming. STEM collaboration is wonderful, but the greatest thing of all is that we're thankful. That's kind of the message that I have tonight. We're thankful, not just thankful to be here to present, we're thankful for our jobs, we're thankful for all the blessings that we have, but who we are are people that work with kids. We're thankful to see these kids again. We missed them. And if you could walk the halls of the middle school, if you've ever walked them, you've heard noise and loud and argument and energy and excitement. It's been kind of eerie the first 23 days because these, I don't know where these kids came from, they're perfect. They show up, they get ready to work, they're wonderful, they're energetic. I can walk the halls and hear the pins drop. Our teachers are teaching, they're trying their best to make sure that there are no gaps in learning. We don't know where we will end up. We've had very few students to become affected by the sickness called COVID. We've had a few teachers we've had to quarantine, but we're all back together now as a faculty, and with our kids coming up and down the halls, it's wonderful. I wish we could tell you that everybody is socially distanced, but in a middle and a high school, there's some challenges to making sure when kids go from class to class, there's distancing. But they're eager. When they go outside, they're ready to learn. When they're inside the class, this is, these are not fake pictures, all elements are working hard. We even had Paul Gribble to come and speak to us because we wanted to get things back to normal in STEM class with entrepreneurship. Our kids are producing, they're glad to produce, and I hope they keep this attitude. Here are some things we do inside the media center, inside of connections classes, inside of our ELA classes as we begin to do projects that are STEM-based and STEM-directed. Kids are wonderful. We're so thankful. We're blessed, and I hope that we can continue to go on. I've ended this abruptly on purpose because after the presentation, there's really not a whole lot of difference in the way that we are taking learning. Tomorrow's a brand-new day. Something major can happen, and we may have to do things we don't want to do. We may have a whole bunch of kids quarantined. High school faced it today. So every day's a brand-new challenge, and we can't afford to sit back. We appreciate you giving us the leadership, the leverage, the opportunity to do the things we do and to try to do them well. We have great leadership. We have great board members. We have brilliant teachers, and our staff is superb. I'm very proud to work for Fannin County School System, and I'm very proud to be the principal at Fannin County Middle School. Thank you for all you've done to help each principal, each school, in getting started back to what we're trying to make, an abnormal, normal year. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Knuckles. We appreciate your enthusiasm in that presentation.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a comment. Keith, each board member had the privilege of attending the first day of school. I was at middle school, and I can testify to the truth of your words. I didn't find a descending, a doubtful, or unpleasant person in the house. Everybody was beautifully natured, they were willing to go to work and pleasant. I had a very good experience and was greatly encouraged.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, sir. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Knuckles. Mr. Chair, item 12 is public comment. Mr. Daner, do we have any public comment? Okay. And actually, the next item, number 13, is facilities update. That's yours as well, Mr. Daner. Welcome to the podium. Good evening, sir.
Thanks, sir. Keith, six miles. That's an inside joke. Real quick, on the facilities update, Mr. Duncan was talking about the traffic at middle school. Again, between Anthony Walden and Darvin Couch, Mr. Young, we got together, and this is the, at the baseball field, Robert Scoop, just a little bit right there, at the end of the baseball field, of course, hopefully you can recognize the cemetery there, that's the turn to the right to get on Ask a Connector. Anthony came up with an idea, said if the buses could make that turn, I think it's going to help out. So that morning, we called Zach Ratcliffe for the county. Zach, we asked him, you know, is there any way you could help us with this? He said, let me talk to Stan. Within an hour, there was a dozer there, or actually a backhoe dug it out, moved some rocks out of the way, gravel there, and by lunchtime, the little curve was fixed. And so again, I want to give a shout-out to Zach Ratcliffe and Mr. Helton there. So again, that definitely helped out the, some of the issues that we had at the middle school. And that's, like I say, that was within an hour of making a phone call to Zach Ratcliffe. So that's how much it took out of it. So again, that tree right behind the backhoe there should be removed tomorrow. So again, that's just going to help visibility out as well. Welding lab, again, we've got some pictures here. If you can actually sort of see inside the curtain, you can actually see a young man using the new welding in the welding lab. So again, just several pictures of it. Go ahead, Robert. There's Mr. Flowers there to the left. So again, I know everybody's real proud about the welding lab, and then there's the, I'm not sure what level of this, but again, that's the, one of the welding classes up there with the welding booths in the background. So again, that's, again, what, you know, the board members approved, that Splosh purchase a couple months ago. Some of the areas, actually, this is the, notice the foot pedal at the bottom, this is the touchless water fountain that every school has. We have leased this with a company to get rid of the, you know, we need to provide water to our students. So again, we've got this at every school, and some schools have leased some on their own. So again, we do have that at all locations. Actually, one out here in the lobby by the men's restroom. Good old fogger. This is what we received from GMA, and Air Armored Decon Pro. Go ahead, Mr. Enslie. Again, that's the liquid that comes in it. You mix that A/B section, we have had to use this at the high school. I think actually Dr. Ramsey wanted to play with it. Go ahead there, Mr. Enslie. And so there, this is the actual first use of the fogger. Every school has one of these. It can be used at any time. Notice the face shield, the, actually, the eye covering, the face mask and gloves, that's highly recommended. And then, so again, we're getting more information on this as it comes in. Actually, got a webinar tomorrow regarding this. As you can see, this fogger, it does put out a mist, and it is, you can control how much mist comes out of it, but again, it is, it's very disinfecting. Go ahead, Robert. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on the facilities update? We'll advance to the construction update. Mr. Daner?
Let me put my glasses on for this. On the construction update, some things that's going on out at the Skora property. The hydrant flow test was approved on August 26th. That has not been completed yet. The core drilling took place on September the 2nd, waiting on its results. The initial results, again, it's not finalized, come back fairly positive. So again, we'll wait on the final approval on that. So keep your fingers crossed on it about not hitting a rock out there. And also, the Level 3 soil survey, it happened on September the 8th. Again, waiting on those results. Hopefully, they'll hold those back in next week. Survey's being updated with all the utilities that's currently out there, such as the cable, power, sewer, water lines, that sort of thing. So again, that should be coming in any time. As soon as the utility people actually get it marked, then our survey company's going to go out and GPS and actually put it on the survey. Civil engineers asked for that, to get as accurate as they can. We've actually got a meeting Tuesday with the architect and the CM and the engineers. First time we've actually met with the engineers to start going over some specifics to the facilities out there. So again, things are coming around. It'll be, before you know it, we'll be moving dirt. So I look forward to that.
Any questions about construction? Okay, thank you, Mr. Daner. The next item is also yours, number 15, is to approve surplus properties. So you had a bid opening this week?
We had a bid opening actually yesterday. We had, went out and tried to do a little survey of what people might be interested in. So there's a couple garage doors out there, a heating unit, just metal doors, metal drawers, a metal roof, a screen door, a sink, a toilet, and a urinal. So we put that all out to bid and had two people put in bids on it, opened up yesterday. And as you can see there, noticed in yellow, Mr. Pete Gray was a high bid on all of the items. There was not any bids on the sink, the toilet, and the urinal. So again, we followed all the process, put it in the, you know, advertise that sort of thing. So again, the next thing on there, Mr. Enslie's a memo. And then again, just taking that bid retaliation sheet and put it in a memo form. So again, this was, would like to do that. So again, this was, would like to do that, to make that recommendation.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I recommend approving the surplus bids as presented by Mr. Danner.
Can the Chair have a motion to approve the surplus bid?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you. Next item is the COPS application.
COPS application, the COPS plan, again, goes along with a five-year plan. The five-year plan, you have to have, to be eligible for state money. So the state money, the CTAE, the building that was built in 1970, of course, this is not the same HVAC that was up there. But again, we have some eligible state money to redo the top floor of the HVAC at the CTA building. Right now, one unit controls six classrooms, offices, that sort of thing. So if one classroom on a weekend or, you know, after hours request either heat or air, you've got to turn on that whole floor. So again, we're going to hopefully use our COPS money. The application has been sent. We're eligible for $112,000 on an estimated $170,000 project. So again, the remainder of that funds, that's not reimbursable by the state. We'll use Sploes funds, and that will get the CTA building up to speed on it.
Okay, so in order to make this happen, this application to go to the state, it has to be approved by the Board of Education. So, Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to approve the capital outlay planning system or COPS application as presented by Mr. Danner.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you for your work on that, Mr. Danner, to get us money from the state to help with our facilities needs. We appreciate that. The next item, number 17, is a memorandum of understanding between the Fannin County Board of Education and Fannin County Government. Mr. Danner's going to present that. Also, Ms. Dos is here and can answer any questions about the memo if the board has any additional questions. Mr. Danner?
Yeah, Mr. Graham reached out to me a couple months ago, and I hope we never have to use this. If there's a natural disaster in Fannin County, Fannin County needs a place to put woody vegetable debris. If you looked at number three right there, it says woody vegetable debris. So if there's a tornado comes through, there's a, you know, something major comes through in Fannin County, what Fannin County will have to do is have a holding area for location till they can break that location, to break that debris down and then haul it off. So when Robert Graham reached out to me, he said, what about the lower area at East Fannin? So I got ahold of Mr. Price, and we all met, three of us met up there. It's not the, it's not the baseball field, it's not the playground, it's that bottom lot that, you know, we, on that one side, we've redone that for Mr. Price, got rid of the tee ball field and make it nice and clean. That other area, that's just pretty much kudzu.
It made jog some people's memories years ago. That used to be where the dumpsters were.
Yeah, it used to be the landfill there in Fannin County. So if there is a natural disaster, Fannin County needs a place to store this material on a temporary basis until they can haul it off. Mr. Price agreed that, you know, right now, it's not being used for anything. So we've got a great relationship with the county, so we thought that, you know, it would be a good thing to do. And notice, it's a, it's a three-month period. It could be extended if they had to, if we ever had a natural disaster.
Ms. Dos, is there anything else to add to that? Okay. So, and you're right, Mr. Danner, we do have an excellent relationship with county government, and, you know, they certainly help us. You saw in Mr. Danner's presentation what they just recently did for us at the middle school. There's examples of that that happen all the time. So we appreciate them very much and happy to enter into this, or make this recommendation for the board to elect to enter into that. Mr. Chair?
Can the Chair have that motion?
I'd like to make that motion, please.
Second.
Is there any more discussion?
Comment? That, in the event that that was used by the county, it probably would improve the property after it was cleared up.
The agreement says they will put it back in the same state before it was used, but they'll probably kill all that kudzu for us, so we'll be doing them, they'll be doing us a favor by doing that.
Right.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Danner, number 18 is an MOU with the Fannin County Department of Health. It's actually two parts to this recommendation.
Yes, so this is an ongoing, again, with the county government and Board of Health. If there's ever a, not a natural disaster, but a, I don't want to say a pandemic, because that's what we're in now, but if there's ever a place that they have to house a bunch of people very quickly. So again, almost like a natural disaster again. So this has been an ongoing thing with the school system for multiple years. Again, this is that same MOU, and it's first at the middle school, I think. Scroll down just a little bit, Mr. Enslie. The middle school as the first location. The second location will be West Fannin Elementary. But again, this is, you know, this is the Red Cross. This is that type of thing coming in. This has been going on for several years with Fannin County. This is just to renew this MOU.
And there's second part of the MOU. Mr. Danner?
This is, again, the same thing, that, you know, scoliosis will be, again, Dr. White, you have to help me on this one now. This is where...
This allows them to come in and work with the nurses and check our kids for scoliosis. Mr., yes, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, this is an ongoing, this is an ongoing thing as well. This is not new. We've done this for several years.
Yeah, they'll work with the nurses. Mr. Roof, did you have anything else on that one that you wanted to include? Okay, so we can take these memorandums of understanding collectively. They're both with Fannin County Department of Health. Mr. Chair, I make the recommendation to approve these.
Can the Chair have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number 19 is to, and thank you, Mr. Danner. You had a long run up there. You've got a lot of business taken care of. We appreciate it. Number 19 is approved CTA property as salvage. Mr. Roof, come talk to us about that.
All right, hello again. We have two different documents to show you. This first one, these are items that the CTAE department is asking to be deemed salvage. These are beyond their life expectancies. They, they're no longer in service, no longer in use. I mean, we're looking at stuff that's rusted, just can't, you know, can't really be repurposed in any way, things that, you know, are completely falling apart.
Stuff that needs to go to salvage.
Stuff that needs to go to salvage. These are, these are items that are just, really, there's really nothing else we can do with them.
All right, so, Mr. Chair, make that recommendation to salvage these items as presented.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you. Item number 20 is to approve CTA property as surplus. Now, this is some property that still may have some value.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Mr. Roof.
So our, our next list here, these are items that we looked at that are, again, you know, older items beyond what we can use in the classroom and items that are no longer working properly. However, we felt as though these items could be possibly repurposed, could be used in other fashions, and so we'd like to have your nod to be able to put these up for surplus. We've divided it up into three lots based on the types of items we're looking at here. So Lot 1, we have items there that all kind of go together based on the types of items they are. A pretty cool robot arm in that lot, if anybody's interested. Well, at least I thought it was cool. It just doesn't really work and can't be used with our current computer software, but it's pretty cool, robot arm. Lot 2, we have two cube 3D printers, again, not really working properly. However, if somebody was crafty, they could probably find a way to get those things rigged up and work in the way that they should. And then Lot 3, we have 26 Honda two-stroke gas motors. Those are motors that were, they're very old, but some of those haven't even, have not even been touched. And the reason they were purchased way back when is it was a project, basically, for a project for the kids, and they were supposed to take apart the gas motor and then be able to put it back together. So I say that all to say that some of these motors have been taken apart and possibly put back together, but possibly not been put back together the correct way. However, we thought there might be somebody out there that knows how to put these back together the correct way, get these things working, and be able to use them. So we just didn't feel right calling them salvage. We wanted to give the opportunity to surplus those items as well.
So all 26 sets of parts are there somewhere.
That's right. That's right. They may be missing a small part somewhere that somebody that's craftier than me could be able to figure that out and get them working, so.
All right, and you will advertise, using our procedure to advertise for bids?
Absolutely.
Accept bids on this, allow people the opportunity to inspect and accept bids through 10:00 AM on Tuesday, October 6th, if approved, correct?
Absolutely.
All right, Mr. Chair, make that recommendation as presented.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Roof.
Robot arm.
Our next item on the agenda is to approve nutrition property as salvage, and we'll welcome Miss Sisson back up to the podium.
Good evening again. Fannin County School Nutrition Program at West Fannin received a brand-new serving line this past Tuesday, and because of that, we are going to ask that you declare the existing one that is mint green, by the way, and was purchased brand-new for the renovation of West Fannin Elementary School, I believe in '92 or '93. So we have, it's met its intended usage and life expectancies, and it is no longer operational, and we would like for you to declare it salvage, please.
Mr. Chair, I make that recommendation as presented.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sisson. Mr. Chair, our next item is the financial report. We'll welcome Ms. Wynn to the podium. And good evening, Ms. Wynn.
Good evening. So we have our July 31st, 2020 general fund financial report at 8.33% of our fiscal year complete. Our local resource, our local sources are at 1.61% versus 3.62% from our prior year. Our total revenues are at 4.29% versus 5.61% in our prior year, and our total expenditures are at 7.4% versus 7.78% from our prior year. That presents our financial statement.
Okay. Recommend approval of the financial report for July 2020 as presented, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have a motion to approve our financials?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is for information purposes that it's a Sploes update. Ms. Wynn, tell us about that number up there.
Yes, we are at $696,867.63. That is 22.8%. That is the third month in a row that we have broke our all-time record during the pandemic.
Yes, that is absolutely incredible and speaks to the, just the incredible power of the Fannin County economic engine. Certainly thankful for that. That's incredible, right there. No approvals needed on that board. Just thankful. All right, the next item, number 24, is annual Sploes engagement, audit engagement letter. Now, Ms. Wynn, this is required by law if you collect more than $5 million in a year on Sploes?
Yes, sir, and this will be our third year in a row to have our Sploes audit. This is just our engagement letter that is with Walden Jenkins, and it states they'll actually probably start working on our audit around October the 1st, but this is just the normal engagement letter.
Okay, and this is presented for informational purposes, and board will certainly follow up with you with the report when they conclude the audit.
We will.
Are there any questions about that item? Okay, we'll move on then, and I'll say thank you, Ms. Wynn. Purchase of computer equipment, item number 25. Welcome to the podium, Ms. Finley.
Well, it's that time of year again for y'all to see me once a month for, to talk about computer and technology purchases, and we're starting off this year by replacing the computers in our engineering lab at the high school. It's time their five-year life cycle is up, and we have to buy real souped-up computers for that lab because they do a lot of video editing and engineering work in order to run all those programs. They have to have a lot of memory and a lot of speed. And so we actually, the ones we had in there were really lagging, and so we ordered a demo for the students to try out. We actually ordered it in the spring, and that didn't work out very well. So we've had it in there since school started, and they're very happy with it. So we were able to try one out before purchasing an entire lab of them. So I would ask you to approve a purchase from ByteSpeed in the amount of $52,710. We did receive three written quotes and are using the cheapest of all three to purchase them.
What was the term you used? Souped up?
Souped up.
Souped up, I like that. Mr. Mathis, we, there's lots of, reminds me of the tech days, lots of ways to describe fast computers.
Yeah, those are really fast.
Yeah, they certainly are, looking at those specs.
Very fast.
Which is appropriate for the engineering classroom.
Very, it's not, it's not a standard computer we'd put anywhere else, but they certainly needed to accomplish what they are learning in their classroom. And also, it'll be very helpful this year during their industry certification. I think Mr. Roof left.
Very good.
But they're doing industry certification this year as well.
Robust computers.
Yes. I like souped up better.
All right, so make that recommendation to approve this computer purchase as presented, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
Yes, you do. Do you have a second? Any discussion?
All in favor?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to invite Mr. Danner to come up. Mr. Foster is unable to be with us this evening, and so, let me get this attachment open right here. And so we're going to present bus purchases for board consideration.
Yes, sir. Mr. Foster under the weather a little bit, but total cost for the bus, sorry, go back up top, total cost for the bus, $95,935 per bus. Again, that's with all the bells and whistles that Fannin County goes above and beyond to make our kids more safe and more visible and everything. So now you can just go down there, Robert. So this is the actual quote from, from the company, The Thomas, and this are all the prices from the state bidding. So again, that's why we don't have to...
Now, this is the state contract for purchasing a school bus.
Correct.
All right, and let's go to the other document that was in there, kind of explain this a little better. And so we have a memo here from Mr. Foster.
Yes, sir. So this is the purchase of four buses, the contract price $95,935 per bus. Three of these will be purchased for from Sploes. One of this is actually the bond bus that happens every, I don't know if it's every year or ever so often, but again, that bond is only for $77,290, and then the remainder of that, $18,645 will be paid for out of Sploes if it's approved. So it's a total of four buses, $77,000 of that is going to be...
We've been approved for state bond.
With a state bond, correct.
Yeah, so, all right, so we'll make this recommendation as presented on the memo, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have the motion to approve the bus purchase?
Yes, you do.
Second.
Any discussion?
A question. Do y'all add the bells and whistles to those, or do they come as they are?
I can't answer that exactly, but I can tell you this, Mr. Dewise, when you come through early in the morning, if it's still dark outside and you see a Fannin County bus as opposed to any other bus, it looks like a carnival.
That's why I asked the question.
So again, I think, I think that extra bells and whistles is what Fannin County does to make our kids more safe.
I would say it's both. There are some of the items like, that we do extra above and beyond a lot of districts. For example, the air conditioning is going to be on that, but then there's other things that our, our folks will do to make the bus...
Wi-Fi, extra lighting, the...
The Wi-Fi.
Wi-Fi, extra lighting, the extended arm.
The extended arm, yes. So there's lots of things that we do to them to, to improve them even beyond the state contract, yes, sir.
They are a beauty to see early before daylight.
Very true.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you, and thank you for standing in for Mr. Foster, Mr. Danner, I appreciate that. Item number 27, we're going to welcome Mr. Rigdon back. Got a couple of items to present here for Board approval. Good evening again, Ms. Rigdon.
Good evening. Okay, so it is September, and typically in September, I come before you asking for your blessing on our mission, vision, belief statements, and also our strategic plan. As a quick reminder, we do the strategic plan through, for the GSBA. To be able to be eligible for GSBA reward programs, we do have to have a strategic plan that has been Board approved, and in that plan, we must sink some of the elements from the Georgia Vision Project for Public Education within it. Our current strategic plan has 23 of the 42 recommendations for that vision for public education. The minimum required is only 15, so we go well above that. So let's quickly take a look at some stakeholder feedback. We did a survey recently of different stakeholders. We pushed it out on social media, we also had an automated phone call. The survey was available between September 1st and September 8th. 231 individuals participated in the survey. The pie graph up here shows you a little bit of the breakdown. It was fairly evenly distributed between the parents and guardians and also the employees. A couple of community members did take it, and one person who was other, I'm not, I'm not certain about that. So from our stakeholder survey, we did get a 90% approval on the mission statement, which currently reads "Developing Young Futures, Learning for Tomorrow Today." 90% is a pretty high margin of approval. Whoops. On the vision statement, 94% approval from stakeholders. The current vision statement reads, "The Fannin County School System holds a vision of excellence for all students with successful progression at each level and a 100% graduation rate." 94% is pretty amazing. The belief statements, we do have nine of them, and I won't read through each one. All of them were in the 90s except for one, and that was the second belief statement, which reads, "Higher expectations result in higher achievement." Only 85% of respondents agreed that that was a accurate belief statement. So now let's move into the strategic plan. We do have three strategic goals. The first one is attaining a high level of student achievement. I won't go through and read each one of these because it's fairly lengthy, but I will share with you the results of the survey about it. The question was, do you agree that our action steps will improve student achievement and ensure that our students will graduate and will be ready for either college or career? And 99.6% of respondents agreed that our action steps would lead to graduation. Strategic goal two is developing organizational effectiveness. Again, all of the action steps are included here in the center of the slide, but on the far side, you can see what the results were. The question was, do you agree that these professional learning and relationship-building action steps are effective? 97% of respondents agreed that they were effective. Only 3% disagreed. The final strategic goal is ensuring stakeholder support and satisfaction. Again, I've included the entire strategic plan, all the goals and action steps related to this. The data I want to share is over on the right. Do you agree with these action steps to ensure stakeholder satisfaction and support? 98.3% of respondents agreed. Do you have any questions or comments about the stakeholder satisfaction survey or about the strategic plan, mission, vision, or belief statements?
Now, we present these for approval per GSBA requirements. Mr. Ensley, you want to speak to that a little bit?
Correct, that's one of the things that's on the application for it to be an exemplary board is the vote of the board, its approval of a strategic plan, and have the, like Ms. Rigdon said, the vision project included in it as well. And we have, I think it's 23 that we have in it versus the 15 that's, that's required.
Thank you, Ms. Ensley. So the data certainly supports recommending as presented.
That is correct. I did share that with the district improvement team on Wednesday, and we could not see a place where the stakeholder survey shows that we need to make improvements or changes, and we did not have suggestions for improving those goals or additional goals.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, make the recommendation to approve both sets of this information as presented.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, that was a great deal of outreach to the community to get that data, and we appreciate it very much. Next item on the agenda, number 28, review the annual calendar of activities. So we're going to turn the floor to Mr. Ensley. Tell us about the board activities for this school year.
Thank you, Dr. Watney.
Yes, sir.
This is a review of things that we look at each year at our board meetings. Some of the things we have on there, of course, are things like Teacher of the Year, which we know has been postponed this year, but still we leave that on there. We look to review our mission, vision, beliefs, which is what Ms. Rigdon just did. We all start, start looking at our BOE planning of our retreats, our, because we have to look at our plans by October the 10th to submit to the state for our trainings that you guys will do to be an exemplary board. You can look down through there at different items that we have. Of course, in December, the annual superintendent evaluation, we also do our board self-assessment, which is also part of the exemplary board, point of board attorney. We get into January, we have the election of our BOE chair and vice chair, look at our different community surveys and parent and student surveys that go out during that time. Then we start looking at the budget very early on. Come February, we start meeting with staff and principals and directors and looking at what we may need to add for the upcoming year, look at our code of conduct and ethics for you guys, again, looking at retreat planning. We look at calendar selections and march, prom graduations, and again, a lot of these things are just reminders for us, this is not something you guys have to vote on, it's just a reminder of things that we need to be vigilant about and look at throughout the year.
And it looks like we're right on track.
We are, correct.
With the information that's presented. This is, it's a great deal of information to compile, and it's a great deal of work to accomplish, but this board consistently does it, that's why they're exemplary.
Correct.
And so I'd like to commend you on your past work to accomplish these goals, and then, Ms. Ensley, thank you for your work to put all this together. Is there any questions or feedback on this? Okay, thank you, Ms. Ensley, for putting that together. So let's talk about board training. Item number 29.
As an exemplary board, you do have to have 12 hours of required training to be that status, and we have done that successfully for several years now. We, they've extended the window out to September the 30th. For school systems, when COVID hit, a lot of them did not have all of their trainings in. We were very fortunate, we were able to have both of our retreats by the time that the pandemic hit. We submitted everything well before we even knew the word COVID-19. So we are very much ahead of the game, and I anticipate an announcement shortly after September the 30th with our exemplary status. So that's, my fingers are crossed, they haven't asked for anything else, and we've submitted everything, so we should be good. But again, the board requirements that we have here listed.
I think it's loading. Might take it a second.
Let's try this one more time. Well, anyway, we need 12 hours. And we will accomplish that again this year. These are the items that Pioneer Risa has to offer for us. These are the different selections that we have, and I know that we spoke when Dr. Watney and I did the video last week about some potential items that we could look at maybe for this year, because it's kind of a little different this year, obviously. And some of the things that we looked at was possibly a retreat, number one, where it includes charter system training, since we're doing new charter. Going back to Ms. Rigdon, you know, we're trying to have that one handbook that would be through a vote of the Board of Education that would be consistent throughout the county. That would be something that Lynn Plunkett, who is one of our DOE trainers, could do. She could do that virtually. They're not traveling to after the first of the year, so I don't know if it would be an issue or not, but also I thought we could visit an SGT possible meeting on those days. And then also have a legal update. We had planned for Matt Cordoza to be here this summer, and he, of course, you know, again, the DOE shut down a lot of their, their traveling and training, but I do think that we could do something for that, for our legal training, because it's always good for us to be up to date with the latest things that come out of the Gold Dawn, and that would be a six hours' worth of training there. And then the second retreat, we did this one similar last year where we did current system-wide technology initiatives and planning for the, for the future. I think that with everything going on with the pandemic, online learning, Pearson Education, which is our, one of our platforms that we're using to elementary and K-8, and also Odyssey where that we're using at the high school, we could look at those types of things as well. And, and the process, of course, visiting schools on all these things that we possibly can. And then the second one, facilities planning for boards of education. Last year, we, we did a kind of a tour of some of the facilities, but with us having a new construction project coming up, I think that would be a good thing for us to be able to go out and see and look at, and anything that we've got going on that we haven't maybe seen in the last year as we go out. But the ultimate goal is to get you guys in the schools where that you can see the great things that's going on each and every day, whether it be the technology, whether it be the facility, whether it be charter, whatever it may be. But I, I know for me, it's, it's, those are, I know, very long days, because we do a lot of walking, and we do a lot of, a lot of seeing and absorbing a lot of things, but to me, those are the, the two of my favorite days of the year, where that we're out and seeing the great things that our teachers and our admin and our kids are doing. So that would be my suggestion. Again, we can pick anything up there, but I thought those would be two retreats that we might be able to pull off.
Is there any discussion on this?
Is that made good with those, or you'd rather look at something else?
I'm good with those selections, I mean, I'll leave that up to everybody else, but definitely, I'm all in favor for it.
All in favor?
Yeah, it doesn't require Board approval, but we certainly want your, your input and want to know how you feel, and Mr. Ensley will go ahead with the arrangements to make that a reality for us.
If everybody's good with it, I'll start looking at it, trying to get things set up. And, but we do have to submit our plan by October the 10th, so if we need to wait to next month.
You would have a, you'd have a day, I guess.
Do what?
You'd have a day, or two days.
Have a day, yeah, I'll get it submitted, but I don't like procrastinating.
Mr. Ruiz, are you good?
Yes, especially with the walkthrough.
Yes, sir.
And the, I thought the items were good.
Mr. Bearden?
I think the way we've been doing them with open discussion, I don't know that title makes a lot of difference, which seems like we cover a lot of.
I would agree with that, yeah. We certainly, a lot of those blend together, those topics, when you enter and see the reality of it, when you go into the schools, absolutely. Okay, it sounds like you have consensus.
Okay, all right, well, we will start that and get that submitted to the DOE.
And that bottom, I bet you that graphic.
We got to vote for it.
You do have to vote on this?
Yeah.
Okay, I was, okay, I'm mistaken then, I did not think action was required on that. Okay, let's go ahead and go back to the local board training selections then with that. I guess I was thinking we would vote on it next month, but if we're ready to go this month, we can go ahead and approve this. I'll make the recommendation to approve as Mr. Ensley has stated.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved.
I'll second it. Any more discussion? All in favor?
All right, thank you, good catch on that, Mr. Ensley.
Thank you so much.
All right, let's go ahead and go on to the next item, which actually kind of, it's personnel-related. We'll just turn over number 30 to you, which is to describe a request from the Department of Education.
Correct, we, with West Fannin being a STEM-certified school, one of the things that they are required to do is offer like what they call STEM days, and I know Mr. Roof is a part of this as well, but the DOE has reached out to West Fannin. Mrs. Brown from the DOE basically has asked if Kim Patterson, who is our STEM teacher at West Fannin, could contract with them and be able to make a virtual STEM day, which is a huge honor for our school system, that the DOE wants to use us as an example of what STEM actually should be looking like. That's pretty, pretty cool.
Yes, it is.
And so the reason we asked for your approval on this, because there is a possibility that there could be some time during the school day that she's currently employed that could require her to do some things with children or do some videos with children that would help basically make the, the video better for the, for the STEM visit. But that's why we're asking for that, because we don't, we want to be transparent and know that there's a, a contract that would be out there with Ms. Patterson. But we have checked with.
We consulted with Dr. Paul Shaw.
Yes, we did.
Director of Ethics for the State.
And he said that it is an honor to, for them to request that, and he has no issue with that whatsoever.
So based on the feedback from Dr. Shaw, we make this as a board recommendation to approve Kim Patterson's work with the Georgia Department of Education, as Ms. Ensley has described, and make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved. You have a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Okay, thank you. Our next item is personnel, and I'll give you just a moment to open your personnel sheet, and I defer to the Chair whether there's a need for executive session.
You good, Bobby? Mr. Cole? I bet you, Mr. Ruiz?
Good.
We're good, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. So the personnel sheet dated 9/10/2020. We have one resignation, and the effective date for this is August 31st, 2020. It's David Pelfrey. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Chair, have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you. We have three recommendations for substitute teacher, and all of these are pending completion of paperwork, background check, and certification. I can take these collectively. Those three are Tanner Davis, Michael J. Morales III, Sheila Lynn Wilson. Make those recommendations, Mr. Chair.
I'll make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, and we have three recommendations for substitute nutrition. Again, these are pending completion of paperwork, background check, and certification. Make these recommendations collectively as well. Carrie Callahan, Bailey Cobb, and Helen Fair, Mr. Chair.
Can the Chair have that motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you, and that takes us through with personnel on to item number 32, which is superintendent's comments, and Ms. Ensley, I'll get the remote from you. Thank you. I just want to say it's been a great meeting, and I just want to thank everybody who's both here with us and also watching us on Rebel TV. Ms. Sisson, thank you for your presentations, and Mr. Roof, Ms. Rigdon, Mr. Knuckles, Mr. Danner, thank you so much. I certainly appreciate Commissioner Patterson coming in and leading the invocation, and Major Bozen. It was great to see the students here and the managers as well. I was very, very happy to have them here. I want to go back to our call meeting on August 27th. Ms. Nguyen, thank you for your hard work on the budget, and I want to thank this board for approving that budget and also for voting to go with the rollback millage rate during the special call meeting on August 27th. Thank you so much. Ms. Ensley, thank you for your work on that board calendar and, and the training to keep this board exemplary. They are exemplary, and they certainly earn it. And Ms. DeGobellis, thank you for getting up and your presentation, and all the principals, thank you for everything that you have done, as well as your faculties and staff and department heads, your personnel as well, for all of the hard work that has gone into getting us this far into the school year. I'm thankful for you and very much appreciate it. I also thank the Fannin County community for their support. Finally, up here on the presentation up on the board, and I'll ask Ms. Ensley to go ahead and hit F5. I want to pay respect to what tomorrow really means. And throughout history, there's certain photographs that they're just kind of ingrained in our minds. For those of you who are here, probably remember the first time that you saw this photograph. And you probably remember where you were when this happened. I know I do. I was in the media center at East Fannin, meeting with parents. On Tuesday, September 11th, 2001, terrorists attacked the United States. They took over two commercial airliners and flew both into the Twin Towers of the World Trade Center in New York City, and this resulted in the collapse of both towers. It was a horrific event. Also on that day, terrorists took over a third commercial airliner. Also on that day, terrorists took over a third commercial airliner and flew it into the Pentagon in Washington, DC. And finally, terrorists took over an additional commercial airliner with the intention of crashing it into another building, but the passengers resisted in that attempt. It failed. Instead, it crashed in a field in Pennsylvania, thanks to the heroic efforts of those on board who fought back. Tomorrow, you'll see the flags at half-staff, and there'll be a statewide moment of silence, including our schools, at eight forty-six in the morning, time of the first crash. No matter what we're facing, y'all, whether it's events like these, horrific events like those, or social unrest, or COVID, whatever it is, America still stands strong. And I'm thankful for our country, thankful for our form of government, and thankful for our schools and for the attempts that are being made to bring society back to as normal as possible. America stands strong. And as stated in Joshua one-nine, we will stay strong, and we will get through this together. Thank you.
Mr. Cole, you want to start us?
I'd like to say it's good to be a part of this fine school system. And I'd like to ask you, if you're curious about how well we're doing, when he talks about ninety-three percent, just go online, start looking it up, because the same way as we can look at it, it's on others. And I think we're doing a tremendous job. I'm not one that wants to get overconfident, but I'm thankful for the ninety-three percent, because what is normal now? You know? So I would like to thank those, you know, we already, special recognition for the cafeteria workers, the nutrition staff, they do an excellent job. I've had the pleasure to watch them work, and during this time, they're actually doing extra duty to make sure all the food is given out properly sanitary-wise. Thankful for the custodial staff and the extra work they do. I was glad to see my wife was, I was talking to my wife about that atomizer, I think that's the correct word, being able to spray and to neutralize that. That's a blessing to be able to do that, go in and sanitize the room. Mr. Knuckles, I enjoy your excitement. The fact that Ms. Sarah can't be here to do that, you kind of filled in for her. Kind of miss Ms. Sarah Welch, and so you took that place. It's funny, I was thinking about you saying you pulled the reins back on those newly excited people. My little girl, I bought my wife a sleigh, and she sat in it, and she said, "I just need some of those yaw sticks." And I said, "Yaw?" She meant the reins. But, you know, it's good to have people that you don't have to get the yaw sticks to, you know, that they're ready to go. And so that's very exciting to hear, and I think we just have a tremendous school. I'm thankful to be a part of this board, these great men that I've grown to love and care for. I'm thankful for you guys, and so that's all I have to say.
Mr. Bearden?
Well, I ain't going to say too much tonight. Mr. Watney and Mr. Cole done said basically what I'd need to say, but anyhow, I appreciate everybody being here. I too, Mr. Knuckles, appreciate your enthusiasm, and I appreciate all of our schools. I know that the principals at each one of the schools has enthusiasm such as Mr. Knuckles does, and I appreciate all of our employees. I don't care what you do, from whatever, whatever, I appreciate you, and I appreciate being on the board with these men also. Thank you.
Mr. Dewey?
To begin, I'd like to compliment y'all for going the extra mile to correct the situation about teachers being essential or nonessential. To me, that's a no discussion, but thank y'all for doing the effort to make teachers know that they are essential. Another thought would be, leading from your nine-eleven comment, when you think, when you, when I think of teachers in school, people, people that care about children and put their lives' work into it, that's the spirit that I think teachers have. I've always said, y'all are so busy serving children that you don't realize how important your position is and how wonderful what you do is, because you change the world of young people and give them a future. The very least that they receive is a whole different world of reality for each child and the ones that are really encouraged and have parents that are supportive and that benefit fully from it. It's astronomical to me, just as people that give their lives, you really do give up your life to let children have a better life. So I appreciate y'all, whether you're, as Bobby said, a custodian, a bus driver, a teacher, if you serve children, I think you're doing wonderful.
It's an honor to serve on the Fannin County Board of Education. Had a lot to celebrate tonight. Congratulations to all of our school principals. Mr. Knuckles, thank you for leading our middle school with such dedication and zeal. Assistant in the nutrition staff, thank you for an incredible mark of excellence in providing for our students. Mr. Roof and the entire staff for a remarkable effort to keep our students healthy. Thank you for all the extra work, keeping our students safe, and for allowing them to attend school. Your dedication is remarkable. Thanks.
Say thank you for everyone that showed up here tonight, come out in attendance and those that are watching. And I also, I guess, reiterate what everybody's already said. Mr. Knuckles, you hold a special place in my heart, sir, right now, especially here and got my two youngins there with you, and I couldn't think of anybody any better, any more qualified or of more love that you show for them than if you do that for all the students, then we are truly blessed, and I know you do, so I'm thankful for it. And thank you for your presentation. Definitely want to thank all you faculty and staff, the hard work that y'all are doing to keep our students here. And Mr. Roof, you also, this with the COVID and all that's going on, I know there's times it's hard, and you're making some hard decisions, and I appreciate you for it. I appreciate y'all's leadership and how you are, what you're doing for their children, how you're keeping them safe. And it's already been mentioned, it is a true, true pleasure to be on this board, and I am thankful. Like Mr. Cole said, I've grown to love these guys, and I absolutely love being on this board. So with that, I'll close and thank you, and I seek for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you again.
Thank you.